God bless you, my brothers and my sisters in Christ Jesus, our risen Savior. And so we praise God for this day, the day that He has made. And we are going to rejoice and be glad in it. I send a letter to all of our New Hopeians and to all of our friends and family that shares with us this hour each week. And certainly, we are grateful, we are appreciative for you taking the time out to share in this weekly ministry here at the New Hope Number One Baptist Church. Certainly, sign in ears if you have not already, call or text, inbox a family member, church member, and family member, and just let them know that the New Hope Weekly Bible Study is on and that it would do them good, not only today, but in the days to come. So we greet each one of you in the marvelous majesty by the name of Him who does things well. Certainly, I want those who are listening, those who are watching, prayers go out to all the sick and shed in within our church family, our community, and sending out throughout this land, those who are going through seasonal bereavements, and those who behind jail and prison walls, you are in our thoughts and in our prayers. So we pray, gracious in all wise God, our Father, we come today just as we all come. Gracious God, empty pitchers before full fountain. As we yield our will to yours, oh God, we ask that thou wouldst have thy own way. For we ask God that you will forgive us of all of our sins. God, continue to blot out our transgressions. And God, we praying now that you would just bless us and meet us in the needs that we stands in need of. God, we asking that thou would forgive us of all of our sins. Oh Lord God, we know that they are all before us. And God, we praying now that if we've done anything contrary to your will and to your way that you will forgive us now. Oh God, you said in your word that if we confess our sins, you are faithful, you are just to forgive us. And God, you said also that you will remember them no more. As for as the east is from the west, you have removed our sins. God, we thank you, thank you for being a forgiving, caring Father. Look on us now, oh God, and look on us continually with our pity, our compassion, and mercy. Lord, we praying for mankind everywhere. We praying, God, that thou would just bless us in the blessing that we all stands in need of individually and collectively. Lord, we praying for our church family, we praying for the body of Christ. God, continue to hold us in these unprecedented times that we find ourselves having to live and having to stand. God, we pray that you continue to give us the spirit of boldness to be able to tell a dying world that there's still a reality and sharing our true and living God. God, we praying your blessings upon each home now, each persons, each individual. God, I pray that just stretch over your hand, whatever the needs of healing, God, you still in the healing business, a miracle. You still a miracle working, God, need saving, God. You can save them right now, dear God. I just pray that thou would just do for all of us what we unable to do for ourselves. Bless us now, God, we praying, we just praying. You know our hearts, and you know our hearts desire, hear our faintest cry. While others are calling, God, we asking, Father, please don't pass us by. Oh God, thank you now for just the privilege of being able to talk to you. And God, we just praying now that thou would just look on us. And you, God, if you look, things have to change, things has to get better. Have mercy on our world, our country, yes, have mercy right now. And Father, we asking you come down and the person of Holy Spirit, touch our spiritual ears that we can hear, eyes that we can see, our hearts, that we can accept what you have to say to us on this day. Pray now, you let the words of our mouth and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable. And I say, oh Lord, my rock and my redeemer. And all the trueing of God that loves the Lord said, amen. All right, let's get right into our study and discussion on today as we still dealing with spiritually giftedness as we dealt with last week discovering our spiritually gifts. Every Christian, every believer, the Holy Spirit has enabled, he has deposited within us gifts, or gift, he have gifted us for the edifying of the body of Christ and the glorification of God. So he has empowered, he has trusted us with gifts, or gift. Every believer, I do believe, has at least one gift. And so we been started last week talking about at least, the Bible makes references of at least nineteen gifts that he has empowered the believer with in order, notice I said, to edify the body of Christ, to edify the body of Christ, but to glorify God. And so we dealt with the gift of administration, we dealt with the gift of apostle, the gift of discernment, evangelism, exhortation. So today, I want to look at the gift of faith, the gift of faith. And that gift, many have confused it with saving grace. This is a different type of gift that the Scripture talks about in Ephesians Chapter Two, Verses Eight and Nine. Paul tells the church in Ephesus about that topic of saving grace. But when we look at 1 Corinthians Twelve and Nine, is that it talks about being empowered, being equipped with this gift of faith. Even before we get to Corinthians, we see this gift in operation in that third chapter of Acts, Chapter Three, is that Paul, I mean Peter and John is operating under this gift of faith, how they worked, a miracle through this gift of faith for this blind, for this lame man. And so when we look at this gift of faith, it that it means to have confidence, it means to have certainties, to trust, having completely assurance in the Lord. Yes, you, we were said that that's kind of somewhat about saving faith, but that was a different, even though the gift of faith is rooted, yes, I could say, it is rooted in saving, in saving faith. But it goes a little bit, this gift of faith, it goes a little bit deeper than just having saving faith, okay? This gift has a trust and a confidence in God that allows that individual to live boldly. That's the word I want you to understand, to live boldly for him. And the Holy Spirit is manifesting himself in that believer. That believer has faith, and the work of the Holy Spirit begins to work through that individual in a mighty way. And so this type of gift, I do believe James kind of picks it up, talks about all with the point of about faith and work. And so this type of gift of faith is accompanied by great works of faith. It's not, all of us got faith, but when it comes down to this work of faith entails with miracles and stuff like that, is that we can, we can, we can see that thou, those, especially in the early church, that was very gifted in this area of faith. Jesus even mentioning it in the Seventeenth Chapter of Matthew, yeah, yeah. The Seventeenth Chapter of Matthew, I think that Twenty, Twenty Verse in that Twenty First Chapter and Twenty First Verse of Matthew's Gospel. Jesus says, even a small amount of faith could do what, move mountains? Could move mountains. And so we understand that the Holy Spirit distributed this gift to summon the church, to encourage and build up the church, and the church having confidence in God. And so those who has this gift of faith, trust that God is sovereign and that he is good. And so they take the God's word and put God's word to test. They all thy weight, all thy belief, ally us in the hands of the Lord. And so this person that has faith, this gift of faith, have such great confidence. And I think, I think we got to understand that have such great confidence in the power and the promises of God, that they can stand strong in thy belief, that there was no wavering there, that there was no weakness there, all you listening to me. So this person, or the person that has been gifted, have such great confidence, have such great confidence in the power and promises of God. And you'll find that gift in 1 Corinthians Chapter Twelve, Verse Nine. And then also you can tag along Hebrews Chapter Eleven, Verses One through Four, Forty. And so these people that was gifted, is that they stands on, you can't get them to move, oh, the promises and the power of God. So that's the sixth gift that the Bible speaks of. The seventh gift that the Bible speaks of is the gift of given, okay? Say that, the gift of given. And we find that in Romans Chapter Twelve, Verse Eight, Romans Chapter Thirteen, I'm sorry, Romans Chapter Twelve, Verse Eight and Thirteen, 2 Corinthians Chapter Eight, Verses One through Five, also 1 Corinthians Chapter Nine, Verse Six through Fifteen, Acts Chapter Four, Verse Thirty Two through Thirty Seven, Galatians Chapter Four, Verse Fifteen, and also Philippians Chapter Four, Verses Ten through Eighteen, talks about this gift of given. And Paul talks about it there, especially in Romans Chapter Twelve. And that's, that's, that's the gift that the Holy Spirit gives to summon the church in order to meet the various needs of the church and its ministries. Not only its ministries, but missionary work and the people who do not have the necessary means to provide fully for themselves. And this, 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 this is a gift that the Holy Spirit have imparted in some in the church, is that they love to give, they are encouraged to provide and to give, to meet the needs of others, the church, missionary work. And so they have a spirit of hospitality, okay? They seek any, they seek ways and opportunity to help others. They have that gift. And one thing that I want to say quickly about this gift of giving, that a person been equipped to give, is that they are willing and able to share what resources that he or she have with pleasure. Yeah, they, 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 they are willing, you don't have to beg them to share what resources that they have with pleasure. And then on the other end, is that they are not seeking for anything in return. And when we look at this, is that this is a gift that God, that the Holy Spirit has particularly given to those individuals for the edifying of the church and the glorification to the Lord. All right, now the eighth gift that the Bible speaks of is the gift of healing, the gift of healing. And this gift is found in 1 Corinthians Chapter Twelve, Verse Nine. And this is one of these gifts that is closely related to the gifts of faith and miracles. But Paul brings it out a little bit more clearly as far as distinguishing this gift from the gift of faith and miracles. And so this gift is given at various time and places to reveal that the God of heaven is still in the healing, he still grants healing. And just because a person does not, who perhaps sick, or who perhaps is going through sickness, is that it does not mean that God is not healing, but it has to be in the will of God. And so, and so, and so Jesus is the great healer, but then there are times that he has individuals in the church that he brings and he works through who is the media whereby the healer heals through. And so we have, we have to keep in mind is that healing reveals that God is near to his people and he cares about their suffering. And just because a person does not be healed through an individual, does not mean that that person does not have the gift. Yeah, yeah, even when it come down to, one of the other signs of a person that may have this gift is that they have, they have a spirit of compassion toward the sick. Just because a person who perhaps going through sickness is not aware of it, but there are those who are interceding, who are praying. And so, and so a person that has this gift of healing is that they are praying over, they are praying with that person regularly. And so they have great faith and trust in God, that God will heal, God will heal. And sometime when God does not heal right there, it does not mean that God cannot. Is that, is that, is that, it has to be in the will of God. And so read 1 Corinthians Chapter Twelve, Verse Nine and Verse Twenty Eight and Thirty, and also James Chapter Five, Verses Thirteen through Sixteen. And that'll give us a little bit more understanding about this gift called healing. Okay, the ninth gift is the gift of interpretation, the gift of interpretation. And that's also in 1 Corinthians Chapter Twelve, Verse Ten, then Verse Thirty, and then Verse Chapter, Verse Chapter Fourteen, Verse One through Twenty Eight. And I believe that this, this, this gift of interpretation and the gift of speaking in tongue, many have misunderstanding or misinterpretations of this particular gift. But Paul, Paul kind of dealt with this with the church in Corinth because especially dealing with speaking in tongues. And you have to keep in mind these two particular gifts, speaking in tongues and interpretation, having a gift of interpretation, is that Paul said it was a sign, it was a sign for, and you got to understand that the writing, when Paul wrote this, this was the earliest stages of the church. And so, and so in order, this is the infancy, a period of the church that this, she steals a babe, and Christianity is on the move, is on the growth, growth. And so in order for God to perhaps get the attention of those who were dead hard into Judaism, is that he had, he had to, he had to do many miracles, he had to do many signs. And one of the miracles that he did was gifted to those who spoke in tongues. And I'm of the persuasion, when you read in the Second Chapter of Acts, it just all depends on how you look at it and how you interpret that. But you don't see where the gift of tongues were being exercised. The miracle, when you think about all the people that gathered in Jerusalem, look at it closer, they came from a different, they were different nationality, different countries that had different language. And Luke said on the day of Pentecost, when they, when they had fully come, that the Holy Spirit ascended upon them. And they spoke in, they spoke in unknown language. When you kind of, when you kind of look at that, is that regardless of what the language were, either they spoke in that dialect. The miracle that took place on the day of Pentecost, when you look closely at Acts account, is that they heard. That was the miracle, not in the tongue speaking, but the miracle is that they heard each one in their native language. If you only knew Chinese and I knew English, is that, is that, is that when it, when, when my English dialect got to your ears, you on a new Chinese, you was able to hear what I said in English. Vice versa, is that I on a new English and you spoke in Chinese, is that when it got to my ears, I was able to understand what you were saying in Chinese. That, that was the miracle. And so I'm not going to argue with, with that, but, but, but he did give some in the early church, the gift of speaking in tongues. And that's, that, that, that was, that was a language that was between that individual and God. And Paul says in Corinthians is that if that was going to take place, that there has to been someone else there that had the gift of interpretation. And that word, the gift of interpretation, was having a supernatural ability to understand and explain messages other in an unknown language. Let me say that again, is that the gift of interpretation is that that person has the supernatural ability to understand and to explain messages other in an unknown tongue, language. And that, that was, that was part of the early church. Now, you know, I know we got a whole lot of that going on now as far as speaking in tongue, but there's no one there that is bringing upon interpretation for the edifying of the body. It's not, it's not a message that is for the body. And Paul said, if you want to do that, if you don't have an interpreter, is that you ought to do it in private. Not, 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 those who have different view and different interpretation of that, is that don't argue with me about it, that's Scripture. And so we have, we have to, we have to make sure is that what we may call today operating all in the spirit, is that really what the Scripture said? Was that part of the early existence of the church? And so you, so you have to take that into prevalent consideration is that when we talk about the gift of interpretation and the gift of speaking in tongue. All right, so I'm going to leave that, I'm going to leave that there. And just says, what the Scripture says is that, is that, is that a person who has the gift of interpretation has this supernatural ability to understand and explain messages other in an unknown language. And it's just like it is now, if someone come from a different country and he has a translator, and that person is able to translate that language into that particular language in that country. All right, all right, all right. The next is the gift of knowledge. The next one is the gift of knowledge. And that's in 1 Corinthians Chapter One, Verses Four and Seven, and also Verses Eighteen through Thirty One, talks about the gift of knowledge. And that person is gifted with knowledge of the Scripture. They are gifted with knowledge and to recognize the Scriptures, they have emphasis. That's what Paul talks about in 1 Corinthians Chapter Twelve, Verse Eight, is the ability to speak this knowledge to others in a given situation. That they, they have, they have knowledge and understanding of the Scriptures. And I think Paul spoke of knowledge and recognized that this, that the highest form of knowledge among men is what, pastor? I'm glad you asked. Paul to answer that is the gospel of Jesus Christ. You ought to read that 1 Corinthians Chapter One, Verses Four through Seven. And so this gift of knowledge is closely related to the gift of wisdom that is found in that first chapter of 1 Corinthians. So a person that has gift of knowledge usually is well versed in Scripture and often has much committed to memory, is that, is that they, they have that gift. All right, all right, I'm going to do a couple more. The gift of leadership, that's the next one, that's, that's the next one, the gift of leadership. That's in Romans Chapter Twelve, Verse Eight, 1 Thessalonian Chapter Five, Verse Twelve, 1 Timothy Chapter Three, Verse Four and Five, and Verse Twelve, and then 1 Timothy Five and Seventeen. And this gift of leadership is also closely related to the gift of administration and the gift of what Paul talks about in Ephesians about pastor and shepherd. But when you're dealing with this gift of leadership, it means to lead, to assist, to protect and to care for others. That's why you don't find no way in the Scripture where the Lord, even Paul, when the organization of the church, is that you don't see anywhere where has president, vice president, it has leaders, leadership, it has leaders. And so the gift of leadership is found in Romans Chapter Twelve, Verse Eight. Sandwich wet between the gift of given and mercy. My, my, my. My, 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 look at it when you get a chance. Is that, that this gift of leadership is sandwiched right in between the gift of given and mercy, when you look at it in Romans, chapter twelve, verse eight. And so, so, so everybody does not have the gift of administration. And everyone does not have the gift of a pastor, an under shepherd, but some has the gift of being a leader. Being a leader, okay? And so, so, so the Holy Spirit gives, the Spirit the gift of leadership in some church to care for God's people and to lead them deeper in the relationship with Christ and each other. So that's, that's, I, I deal with that, distinguishing between that as a leader versus a pastor or under shepherd, okay? So read that when you get a chance. And then I want to look at the gift of mercy, the gift of mercy. And we, when we first see that is in Matthew, chapter eighteen, verse thirty-three. And Ephesians, chapter two, verses four through six. Romans, chapter twelve, verse eight. James, chapter three, verse seventeen. Jude, verses twenty-two and twenty-three. And Paul talks about it in Romans, chapter twelve, verse fifteen. And Galatians, chapter six, verse two. Paul talks about the gift of mercy to those he get, the Holy Spirit gives to those in, in the church to love and assist those who are suffering and walk with them unto the Lord, the lives that burden to be lifted. And we see that the gift of mercy is found in God's mercy toward us, that send us. And is consistently expressed with, with measurable compassion. And those who are with this gift are able to weep with those who weep. Those who have this gift of mercy is that they bears one another burdens. They are sensitive to the feelings and circumstances of others and can quickly discern with someone is not doing well. A person who has this gift of mercy is that they are a good listener. They, 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 they don't mind listening. Do less talking, more listening. They fear the need to simply be there for others. So this is the gift of mercy. And we need to pray preferably, discover what our gifts are. Gift of mercy, gift of leadership, gift of knowledge. Preferably consider the gift of interpretation, the gift of healing, the gift of giving. And then the gift of faith. Each believer has been gifted by God, by the Holy Spirit, by God through the Holy Spirit to edify the body, but to glorify God. Okay, we, we're gonna wrap that up for today and we're gonna look at some other, some other ones on next week if the Lord's will. Let us pray, grace to God, our Father, we thank you again for your word. We thanking you, Father, for trusting us to be able to, to treasure this gift that you have given us. Bless us now, awaken us to the realization of who we are and whose we are. Bless us now, God, to be able to be about your business. We ask all your blessings upon each one now, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.